Of course, it is required to assess the impediments and and find those as part of the consolidated planning process. But unlike the consolidated plan, there are not the stringent requirements attached to it such as a thirty day public comment period or a public hearing. Or even public participation is not required, although we did look to the community and stakeholders for that type of participation. Again, with the data and trend analysis, the real goal is to look at the past ten to twenty years and and as I think noted before. HUD in the in the future will want us to look all the way back to to nineteen ninety's with the goal in mind of identifying trends and helping. Using those trend analysis to help forecast for the upcoming to be determined trends. That way, we can plan the strategy for the next five, ten, even twenty years out and sort of lay the foundation for improving conditions now. And in the future for fair housing choice. The data that was used census data ACS in particular, twenty thirteen, twenty seventeen, five year estimates. The comprehensive plan and the U D O were of course looked at. And we also use the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act when it came to lending practices. We met with stakeholders, of course, over the last several weeks, we've been highly involved with various city leadership. And the various departments, including planning, community development and the city manager to help properly articulate some of the. Some of the advances that the cities made and some of the issues that we hope to tackle over the next five, ten years. Again, this is summary of the updates from the previous version that was. Put out to the city. The top two come from last week's one on one sessions that we did clarify that the A I or the analysis of impediments is a resource document. And we also put a paragraph in there detailing the impacts both known and sort of unknown of the COVID nineteen. And how that might that might change some of the findings or some of the policy coming up in the near future. Other than that, we we look to clarify a lot of the narrative and the observations that were made. To make it easier for the reader to understand what we're we're trying to say and to also draw out the the various city. Successes that they've seen over the year and the policies that have been in place to help improve for housing choice. In particular, some of those were going over the multifamily family developments that are under construction or approval or up for approval. We expanded some of the coverage and successes of the U D O mission as well as some of the transportation aspects. We did try to make it more clear that this is for the city of Burlington only and that it is not for the county wide. But we did look to compare city data to county data when feasible. We've also added the survey results for both stakeholder and the community survey to the end of the A I for reference. And again, we've updated some of the freezing and narrative in the explanation of both the identified impediments. As well as the fair housing action plan to incorporate some of the latest feedback from city council. So here again are the identified impediments. Again, a lot of it surrounded around older housing and the need to. To continue to grow and preserve affordable housing for low income families. Affordable housing being a really an impediment for most cities nationwide at this time. And the fair housing action plan, no big changes to this other than some of the wording and again. The details in the actual report that sort of spell out and and narrate. The strategies behind each of these actions that the city can lean on as they make their plans for the next five, ten years. But again, some of the highlights are to further establish financial incentives for developers and to expand that for profit nonprofit aspect of development. I won't read all these to you, but. But these are some of the actions that that we've really drawn out.
L D R about that one project, it's been a it's been crazy.
Thank you, Spencer.
But let me know if I can help out that one project that you're working on. It looks like I looked it up, it's like a little bit in our city or in our E T J. But um and also Bram's E T J. Kind of.
I'll listen to yours.
Like a conservation.
Scott, can you? Conrad, I think he's on a different conversation.
I wasn't quite sure.
All right. Anything else that you had? Otherwise, are you open to questions from council members?
Yes, sir. Open for questions, further feedback.
All right, questions, feedback from council members.
Well, first of all, I was. To make sure I knew I did my homework, I read your manual, okay? And I actually marked it old fashioned way with stickers and so forth. There was some fairly, there really was some interesting information in here in reference to. The community and how certainly we'd be impacted by housing. Some of it is something that would probably was not surprised by in a reference to the. I think high number of single family families with children. Especially the poverty rate for single female adult families with children. Was was really substantial that I that I noted here. I I think the one one that fascinated me and frankly, certainly it has something to do with housing, but. Also in these times was on page forty four, when you mentioned transportation. And you looked at North Carolina compared to Burlington in terms of people working at home. And as of this date in North Carolina, it was five point two percent and in Burlington, it was only two point two percent. I'm not sure if that relates back to type of jobs here, maybe more than anything else, but I I'd be interested to see how that might change. In in the very near future. The. One that. Let me find this one now, it really got my attention. Was the graph on education. In reference to. Opportunities or to poverty and certainly it's it's it makes. It makes it makes sense, but it's something that I I truly believe that we need to share. And I'm sure they realize this with our school system because that that particular graph and I'm trying to find it now, I marked too many of it here. Was really substantial and and you might know the one I'm talking about. In in the survey itself, but the point is is obviously, and I don't know how this compares to 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 communities, every community is different. But we have a number of people who have very limited education. Which probably in many situations is going to translate into low income. And they also obviously have families. So I read my my question was is. The the programs we have now in C D B G and then also with the Burlington Housing Authority working through that that mechanism. If you had to say what number of homes or percentage of homes? Or or what's a particular ratio now in terms of how of how weak are we are in affordable housing? Or how do we i- is that even a fair question to you comparably?
I can address that a little bit and I without having the specific chart right in front of me to quote numbers at this point, but. I know we have this in our in the report, the number of cost burden households. Indicates that and we have comparisons for the number of units available at different rent levels and and home price points. Versus what people can afford and that establishes what we would refer to as a gap analysis. So comparing. The number of cost burden households versus the number of units available at affordable rents or affordable purchase prices. Would establish a shortage of of affordable housing units. That's that's that methodology is commonly used to say, you know, X number of thousands of affordable housing units are are needed to meet the demand. It's a simple approach to to making that statement. Doesn't take into account and we've discussed this previously, what's referred to as naturally occurring affordable housing. Of course, as you start to develop more housing, some of the older stock will naturally have to. Landlords and and sellers will have to reduce their prices, of course, and that will help to mitigate as well. So more new units helps drive down the cost of some of those that are less than adequate or less than than current, if you will, in the market. But certainly there is a shortage and Spencer, you might be able to pinpoint some data quicker than I could right at the moment.
And and I would just speak to the preservation of affordable housing of, you know, when we look at the age of housing. That's not always a bad thing. Now, there are some mitigation efforts that need to be made for some of those that can be unsafe. Again, part of the fair housing choice is to to ensure safety in those choices. But as Eric mentioned, some of these older homes, as new homes are coming in, they do become more affordable and then it's, you know, greater efforts to preserve those. And to keep them rehabilitated as needed. That's part of the approach of the C D B G or our home programs that can help with those efforts.
I noticed that in the graph on page ninety six in terms of education attainment in reference to the labor force. The number was civilian employed thirty one hundred and twenty one. Unemployed four eighty three and not in the workforce sixteen thirty seven, which. You know, twenty one hundred and twenty people basically are not in the workforce compared to thirty one hundred that that. That are employed, which are obviously would tend to to equate to some. Some issues in terms of housing and it just just, we all know this, as you follow that education. Formula. The. That seems to be the kicker here throughout our community and then. Certainly, we still probably deal with some of the changes in terms of our economy from twenty years ago in reference to textiles or fifteen to twenty years ago. But I I I read what I'm trying to get to is. How do this a city of our size that has. In in the community we are in. That is is done fairly well financially, but but comparably to many communities. I gave you an example of the. Cities above fifty thousand people in North Carolina. Burlington is the smallest of that number in terms of population is fifty three thousand, six twenty five. I assessed property value as of January of two thousand eighteen, it's grown some since then, obviously, is four million nine. And forty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty eight dollars and nineteen cents. The next size city close to us in that particular group would be Chapel Hill, which is a different, completely different city. And their proposed tax about their tax evaluation is eight million, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. The next size city in the state that's closest to us is Wilson, which is forty nine thousand. Residents, their tax evaluation is four million, one hundred and twenty seven thousand, one fifty two, nine oh seven. And then surprisingly, if you go up to even to a Monroe, which is thirty five thousand people. Their valuation is about three, five, nine, three somewhat close, but what I'm trying to get to sometimes I believe. In my experience is that when you will compare to communities that simply are just much bigger than we are. And the reality of those communities, whether over time in terms of development or businesses located there or whatever it may be. Their tax values are substantially higher than ours. In terms of tax base, which is the basically the working finance along with. Sales tax in terms of of funding general fund type type operations. And our sales tax allocation ratio is really strong and I think Jim and I talked about this one time. The only cities in North Carolina that's got a higher sales tax ratio. Access to to sales ratio is the. Actually, it's Jacksonville, which is somewhat surprising. And then Winston Salem, I mean, so so that part of it, and of course, now the buyers may have an impact on this, we're pretty solid on. The other thing that that I asked you guys, this is a correlation to 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 some of our housing issues is. Our property tax collection. We. In terms of the largest cities in the state. We have the worst tax rate equivalent in terms of of collections. We had point zero zero eight one, which is higher and the next one closest to us is point zero zero four two, which is Winston Salem. Now Wilson, on the other hand, is actually higher, therefore point zero one zero one. So my my point is. It appears that in in this particular issue that we're here now dealing with now, which we're considering what kind of investment it might take. To make the improvements that's needed. We have to still go back to what kind of financial power we have to get this done and how it compares. To the existing services has been provided within the organization. So my question is, is. It appears that Piedmont, obviously compared to the Charlotte area and compared to the primal area, Piedmont is not nearly as affluent. Obviously, as you get to the other parts of the state, it gets much, much more or less affluent at all in terms of the various cities in reference to what they can do. But what what can we do in reference to working with existing resources in terms of what we're trying to do with C D B G? And what we got to, how can we blend that with the Burlington Housing Authority? I know they're trying to get changed to like section eight housing. And then the other section eight housing in the city itself, which I think you guys included that, did you not in your surveys? Am I correct? On section eight housing.
What did? I thought there's not section eight housing, but I I mean, I believe that and Sonja might be able to speak to this better about. The use of section eight vouchers is administered by the Graham Housing Authority and where where they allow people to utilize their vouchers, that sort of stuff.
I mean, actually, I know there's a number of of apartment complexes that I believe is honored in that. Are they not, Sonja?
So with section eight, you have two types, you've got a voucher system that is administered by the Graham Housing Authority. They are the authority here in the county that holds all of our vouchers and that kind of is individually based, so that goes with a person, the voucher. And so that's accepted, you know, a individual was given a voucher and that is accepted at a landlord's wheel. But then you also have section eight property base, which I think is what you're referring to. And these are apartment owners that already received subsidized loan or something for the construction. Of the apartment complex and so in return, the rents are reduced. So that's property based and we do have a number of section eight property based units here in Burlington.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, the Brittany apartment complex now must must honor the section eight or the voucher system. As the apartment complex there at City Park directly behind the Canola Center and the tennis center, which is relative view, so. What I'm trying to get to is is if I'm mistaken, please correct me, but I'm trying to see exactly where. There are opportunities now for either one of those two type. Vouchers or programs a- as we talk about throughout the city that can be that can classify for affordable housing.
So are you saying how do we use section eight better within city limits? Is that your question?
I I am, yes, yes.
Okay.
I can get, I can speak to that. We don't necessarily have this in our action plan, but there are many communities. That as part of their fair housing strategies pass a local ordinance that prohibits a landlord from making a. Decision. For to accept a render's application based on the source of income going to be used to pay the rent. And what that gets to is not all landlord, not all private landlords are willing to accept section eight. Tenants, multifamily apartment complexes, because they're subject differently to the Fair Housing Act cannot reject. Section eight vouchers. Now, they might establish their rents at such a level that folks with vouchers can't afford them. So it it prices them out, but they cannot deny them if they otherwise would meet eligibility requirements. But many jurisdictions will pass a local ordinance that suggests that private landlords may not discriminate based on source of income. And having a section eight housing voucher is essentially a an income supplement, let's say it's a thousand dollars for a household. Well, if you're going to use that to pay rent, then you have enough to pay the rent, they shouldn't be able to discriminate. As an as a matter of opinion and experience dealing with a lot of housing authorities across the country. I don't think many landlords realize, but. Housing authorities pay section eight vouchers directly via A C H direct deposit to landlords on the first of the month. Some from a rent rent collection standpoint, I'd rather deal with the housing authority making a direct deposit than any. Any private renter trying to write me a check. It's a it's a sure thing to get that rent collected. But that off the a matter of opinion there, but certainly working with the housing authority to promote. How they make payments and how they inspect their properties would be would be helpful. A lot of landlords also don't know that if a tenant gets evicted. While they have a housing, a section eight voucher, many housing authorities will will qualify, will. Take that eviction as a disqualification for receiving your voucher. So if you get evicted because you damaged a property. Well, that also puts you at risk and many housing authorities at risk of losing your voucher altogether. So that 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 risk of losing your voucher is a is a housing authority incentive to for the tenants to maintain the property and. Be good be good tenants. So I think if a lot if more landlords were aware of those kind of programs. And the rules and and payment processes for section eight vouchers, they I would think that they would be a lot more willing to accept vouchers.
Well, in the in the seventies and eighties here, there was a significant number of of apartment complexes built down Mevin Street, you had. Of course, the everyone around two thousand there at City Park, then you had the colony apartments built there, you had another one beside it, which is the larger unit. Then the Brittany was built out on in West Burlington and on Graham Hope Dale Road. And and that's my question is. In some of these complexes now, and they very well may be honoring these vouchers, but we talked about diversity in terms of location around the city. I I would think that would be a an ideal place for a number of people if they indeed could get a voucher. They could take advantage of what still I think is 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 pretty well. Will will. Maintain properties and it's really throughout the city itself. I mean, it is mean it's in the central Burlington area and it's in the middle, so it's not. Clustered just in the north and northeast, which is I read your report, it appeared to me that. That that's where you were looking at most of the housing situation here was in the north. The northeast and in in those areas, potentially saying even some of the southeast part of Burlington. So that's just a. What I'm trying to get to is I think we need to realize what we have and how we can put people in them. And give them a chance to have good, solid housing with some of the resources and the opportunities and the programs that we've got. And we we just need to figure out how we can partner with as many groups as we can to be able to provide this service. That, like you said earlier, I was talking to Richard Parker early today and Richard made a comment to me, I was asking about Elon. Richard's a real estate person here, a very successful real estate company. His comment was during a recession, our business is always great, we're packed. That was that was point. So I I can't, I can't imagine that some of these if these property owners are not. Are they aware that this opportunity is available and especially Eric with what you said earlier? That if you go if if a family moves in and and destroys a piece of property, they lose everything then in terms like they, you know, they lose their their. Their amount of money they can get from from the housing authority, so. I I don't know, again, i- is that a a method of somehow working with these private ownerships to 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 really educate them on. What might be some great opportunities to keep their housing area in good condition in terms of terms of of rentals and so forth?
Well, and I think that's would certainly be an eligible use of your C D B G funds. I know you you earmark some for fair housing promotion. And so conducting workshops with with potential tenants and potential buyers is always something that's done, but. It it may be worthwhile to consider doing some landlord workshops to to promote affordable housing. Working with the city on its programs, the housing authority, the state on its housing programs as well. So. Some information sessions for landlords in Burlington would probably be a worthwhile effort and would certainly be an eligible use of. Of the C D B G funds that you have earmarked for for fair housing promotion.
I want to note one thing too, is that on the individual side with the vouchers that the Graham Housing Authority releases, they are limited to the amount that they actually have. So which is limited to the amount of funding that they have. So the and this is not just here in Alamance County, but this is just all over the nation is that you will see a huge. Waitlist for section eight vouchers. So a lot of people know about the program, but they just can't get the actual voucher because sometimes the waitlist or some in some places jurisdictions, they're two years. Just to even get a voucher, people are waiting two years to get a section eight voucher. So one of the things that some jurisdictions have done is that they will use their home funds. To do a tenant based rental assistance program that can be set up very similar like a a section eight voucher system. And allow their housing, their local housing authority to administer that program and so they will allocate some of their home funds towards that. So you can do something like that, too, that would be similar to the voucher system.
And as far as the availability of those vouchers and section eight or subsidized construction of units, my understanding those haven't become more available generally. Funding is not really increased.
No. And Eric and Spencer, y'all can speak to this. I mean, that one of the things is that HUD is kind of getting out of building public housing, one. They don't like to build public housing anymore. That's just been a policy trend that's been happening over the past ten to twenty years. I mean, I think Pope Six is probably the last thing. Where they were involved with actually building it. So and then they're limiting the amount of vouchers or the funds that they give to housing authorities for vouchers. So it was either you have a voucher system that can be individually ported or you have developers or the owners of rental property actually saying, hey, HUD, I, you know, I will. You know, in exchange for you giving me funds, I will reduce the rent or subsidize, I'll reduce the rent to help people who were in a certain income category.
And I absolutely agree that and it we shouldn't anticipate that that Congress or HUD will be allocating any more funds for. Public housing development. That's absolutely correct. And quite frankly, we haven't seen a reasonable increase. In the congressional allocations for housing vouchers in a long time. The only increases we see are basically just keeping up with inflation to increase. The the payment standard, as they refer to it, the amount of funds that that a voucher holder would receive, not actually expanding the number of vouchers. Granted, there's population shifts around the country, so numbers do change from time to time, but overall, there's not been much of a an increase. I I would just reiterate, though, I still think that the number one funding source for developing additional affordable housing. Is the low income housing tax credit program, which builds apartment complexes that's administered by North Carolina Housing Finance. It's administered by North Carolina Housing Finance. So as you look for working with potential developers that might go after those funds. Utilizing CDBG funds as we spoke about previously to help with the acquisition or, or. Assemblage of vacant lots or underutilized lots, improving infrastructure. Improving street access sidewalks and water sewer, whatever the case might be to improve. The development feasibility of lots. I think that would serve as a catalyst. For developers being able to access to tax credit funds from state housing and certainly having your local contribution. Strengthens their applications. So it might be something to consider in the future is putting out an RFP. For developers that would like to do a tax credit development within Burlington. And therefore you're setting aside either underutilized property. Or some funding that would, that would go towards matching a tax credit award should they be, should they win an allocation.
Thank you, Eric. Do you want to open the floor if other council members have any questions?
I would just like to say that the, the readability is much improved. And I appreciate that, although I'm used to reading grants and they read pretty much that way, but it, it did make us look a little better. So. I appreciate the work that went into that effort.
Yes, ma'am. Happy to do that.
Yes.
Other questions or comments from council?
If no one's still on, no one is still there. No one's left.
Here, our.
There you are. When, when we went on the tour, Jim and I were on the tour earlier in the year. And we talked a great deal about what we were trying to do in terms of. Working with private property developers to, to maintain their property, to make improvements or whatever. Can, can you give a, and this is a subjective question, but are you seeing? Improvement? Do you believe with the efforts that, that your staff is putting in place? To, to, to attempt to not only maintain, but hopefully improve some existing properties?
I'm assuming you're speaking to when our staffs are, our code enforcement staffs and in their. Various divisions, issues that they're seeing with, with housing.
Yes.
And so. Obviously with, you know, COVID, we've had to adjust things a little bit, but certainly feel like. We were making some headway there. I think Mike and Chris Marlin would certainly say that they felt like we were heading in the right direction with that. One of the things we were looking at and talk about this more with the consolidated plan is some of our housing. That needs to be improved. Some of that is rental property. And so obviously with home funds, we're, we're working with owner occupied improvements rehab projects. But we're not doing much on the, the rental rehab. And that's where you see some of the issues with minimum housing. And so we talked about that, I know with council in the past, and that's something we, we want to at least consider, you know, do we do loans for. For rental properties to help bring the quality of that housing up. So that's something, you know, I think that could help. And also as we're, as a code enforcement. Folks, we're going out and we're saying, here's where you don't meet our minimum housing standard. You can also say, but at the same time, there are opportunities for you to. To, here's some financing opportunities for you to be able to make those improvements. So looking for a balanced approach.
And what's been the response or have you even had a chance to do this with some of the owners of the properties?
So I, I can't really speak to that in detail. I'd probably have to have Mike or Chris Marlin chime in. I don't, I don't think we've made any policy decisions about, you know, doing loans for rental properties. They were done years ago. We haven't done those so much recently. So. It's really not something that we can offer and have say, say that it's there now. That's something that we're wanting to discuss with council and see if there's appetite to. Consider those things. And I think Sonja probably spoke to some of that last week, some, some one on ones.
And I'll answer that from time to time, we do get some of the old landlords that participated in our older program from years ago. That they will call and will say, do you still have this program? Can you bring it back? You know? So I think that overall the feedback was very good from the landlords that did participate in the program of the city used to have. So it, I think it, you know, of course is something that, you know, I, I recommend a lot doing anything that we can to help. And that is one of the things that, you know, would be a, a, a good suggest, a good suggestion or a good move to make.
The key with those monies is getting them paid back. So the system is self sustaining and it grows. And some of that money's truck coming back in and we're putting it back out as opposed to it being almost just a write off. Because it's not getting paid and it would appear to me, it's not getting paid back. But it would appear to me that a, a landlord that it's a, it's a business. They would be more inclined to, to pay those back. Therefore, the program would be healthier from a financial stability standpoint. And honestly, if you did just an inventory of maybe the housing that was most in need. A, a lot of it would be those properties. I think that's a viable. Policy decision that we need to be looking at to, to, to help them from that standpoint. I agree. In reality, Jim, that would basically just help their property back. Absolutely. It's a business for them. It's a business. So if we can use this to help them. Improve their business model and at the same time create. A, a, you know, that's where private, public partnerships are extremely important. It, it's going to provide a better, less cost burdened program for. The affordable housing market, those that need it. And those are the ones that are going to be paid back because they don't want their properties to be leaned, you know, but put a, put a judgment against them. I mean, they. They need that sustenance of revenue.
Definitely wholeheartedly agree with you, Councilman Butler, that the, the paybacks that we have on our existing loans, they've been. Majority of them have been from the landlord rental program that we used to have. And that's almost, I mean, we've almost collected probably about 95% of that at this point. So the ones we aren't really collecting on have been the ones that were the personal ones. So, yeah.
Yeah. That, that's a, you know, we need to really stay on top of this piece because I think. Harold, to your, your point earlier, that's, that's where we can get the most bang for the buck and really start a program working using existing. CDBG and home funds and the money that's there, that, that seems to be where we can really get some traction. I, I agree because you're dealing with, with an individual or you're dealing with a, a property owner who quite frankly, it's a business for him or her. Yep. And it, it, it makes everybody, everybody benefits from that the way it appears to me. If indeed like, like Sonia say, if they're paying their money back, they're keeping the value of the home. And the property and it just, you know, it, it provides, you know, solid housing for people who want to go that route.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Otherwise we've got a couple other agenda items that we need to move on to.
Just glad this conversation has come up because we've been talking about doing this for quite a while. I think needs to be part of our agenda to actually look at it and say, we're going to do it.
Since we are on the topic of using the home funds for loans, I think, as Kathy mentioned, that has come up before is. Any council members who have an objection to continuing to explore that? Eric, would you like to talk on that or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one point that we have not mentioned before, and again, it's not necessarily in our action plan. But something that might be available and of interest to, to you guys. The CDBG program has a program called a section 108 loan program. The city may have used this in the past. I may be familiar with this. The 108 loan program allows the city literally to borrow up to five times the annual allocation of CDBG funds from HUD. It is repayable and it does come with, with interest. However, the idea is you would take section 108 loan. To, to create a, a source of funds large enough to do something that is not otherwise achievable. Many jurisdictions, smaller communities will utilize that just simply to pay for infrastructure, large infrastructure projects, and then they'll use. The subsequent years of annual allocation just to pay it back. They're really just trying to get a lump sum of money to do a big project. But ineligible use for it is to establish a revolving loan fund. A lot of local jurisdictions will use it for economic development to provide loans to small businesses. But you can also use it for housing rehabilitation loans for both homeowners and for landlords. So that would be something. To consider. And again, the idea being you get a one or 2% interest or something like that, for example, from HUD. You, you have the, the terms that you put out be slightly higher. So that you're at least breaking even and being able to cover some staff and legal costs to run the program. But that you generate enough revenue, as Mr. Butler said, to keep the pool alive, but also to pay back. HUD, the, the initial principal and interest. So, so just something that you might want to add to your conversation as you explore this topic further.
I appreciate you suggesting that. Is that something council members would be interested in hearing some more information on that day?
You know, I'd like to take this thing in segments if we can look at, at taking our existing monies. You know, when I think of 108 funds, I, I think of, I've seen a lot of those funds be, a lot of those loans be used to help revitalize downtowns. And, and as a matter of fact, most of what I read, that's what those monies are used for, those small businesses downtown. So I think that's a way more complex conversation about where we would want to go with that type of funding. But I, I would like to see us talk about the, the current pool of monies that we have. How that would look in the rental market in, in regards to loans.
Other comments on this from council? Obviously, this is a continuing housing discussion that we've been having. All right. With that, we'll move on to item B on our agenda, which is our CDBG five year consolidated plan, 2020 annual action plan. And our same list of speakers. Vanya, do you want to kick things off?
So this, so the new, this is actually new. So this isn't a revision, but this is the actual. The most recent draft of the consolidated plan, our five year consolidated plan. And our 2020 dash 2021 annual action plan. And so as part of that, you do see the needs assessment and the market analysis and a strategic plan. And then the actual, just the annual action plan for the next year. On how to combat some of those issues identified in the needs assessment and the market analysis. And so I'll turn it over to Spencer and Eric again.
All right. And we'll try to go through this briefly as well. So the consolidated plan, quite different of course than the analysis of impediments, but there are some similarities throughout. So we'll get to the background first. Again, consolidated plan every five years, this is put out. Comes with an annual action plan and then an annual action plan for the next four years as well, but it's all tied back to this consolidated plan. So. What we put out in the strategic plan is we're going to be held to that for the next five years. But the, I, I think we, we've gone over most of this before, but again. HUD manages this through what they call the Integrated Dispersment and Information System, IDIS online. And in that program, it is a very templated type of report. So we don't have quite the flexibility. And how we present the information, it, it's basically given to us from HUD and we fill it out as best we can. Again, using some of the same census data and local data when applicable. Again, the annual action plan is part of this for the first, for the five year con plan, but then we'll have annual action plans for the next few years as well. And consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or the CAEP, again, put out each year to describe. How well the city achieved those goals that are laid out in the annual action plan. Again, the whole point of CDBG is to provide decent housing, suitable living environment. And expand economic, economic opportunities primarily for people and households, low and moderate income. This, the regulations for this, of course, does have to have citizen participation. So there are some requirements for that. Two public hearings held every year. A public comment period, which is normally a 30 day period, but with COVID, there has been some changes to that. And of course, public comments must be given consideration. So as Sony briefly described, there are five components that make up the con plan. The needs assessment, which when you're looking at the community to identify the various needs based on the people there. The housing market analysis sort of answers, what does the city offer to fill those needs? And then of course, what is the gap in that? And that's how we can formulate our five year strategic plan. The annual action plan lays out the exact methods and projects and activities that we'll take over the next year. And of course, the citizen participation is attached to that as well. For 2020, the HUD allocation, including program income was just over 750,000 for the city. I think we've hit on this before. That minimal funds are not going to answer all the needs that are identified in the needs assessment. So this is where. As the councilman pointed out, we need to be smart and strategic. And how we use the funds and how we leverage other resources to work together to achieve those needs. The housing needs assessment does go over population changes. It goes over income and poverty. And it also describes housing problems. And again, these are identified and, and defined by HUD and those housing problems being lacking a kitchen or complete plumbing. Overcrowding and cost burden, which again, cost burden is when you spend. Our household spends more than 30% of their income on housing cost. Severe cost burden is when it is over 50% of their income on housing cost. There are some assumed low and moderate income. People and those would be elderly, disabled adults, victims of domestic violence and homeless. So again, some, they're presumed low income people that can benefit from these programs. As far as the citizen participation, I think most people are familiar with the survey results now. We had. Just over 150 responses from the community to give us sort of a, a basic feel of what some of the needs are from those that took it. And affordable housing is the number one up there with economic development being number two and public services coming in at third. And the stakeholder survey, about 24 community organizations participated in this. As did they participate in the, the live sort of presentation of this. So we were able to capture their thoughts on that. And again, creation of affordable housing and home buyer assistance, public services. Public facilities and infrastructure improvements were some of the things that were highlighted there. Community Development Block Grant has eligible use categories and these are sort of laid out. So when we come up with the various goals. And the strategies to implement these things, there are certain restrictions on how these funds can be used. And these are just a few of them, but public improvements and public services, there is a portion for planning and administration, et cetera. So this year's priority needs are listed in the left hand column to expand and improve public infrastructure and facilities. Public services and quality of life improvements, economic development. And finally, preserve and develop affordable housing. And the goals that are tied to each of these would be on number one is expand public infrastructure, improve public infrastructure capacity. Provide the supportive services for special needs, provide for small business assistance, and finally preserve existing homeowner housing. And, and I will highlight that these are the goals and priorities, but they are not ranked in order. This is just how we present them in the plan. So, but we can sort of mix and match accordingly to that. But the next slide sort of shows the allocation for the next year. On what the community development department and city leadership sort of came up with. The administration would take about 15% of the funds for a little over 113,000. The bulk of the funds going into public facilities and infrastructure improvements, that's about 55% or just over 417,000. Public services is at 20% this year for 148,000. And then finally, the last two, 5% each emergency repair to preserve and develop affordable housing and economic development, which is mostly targeting small business assistance program. And believe as we previously stated in some of the one on one sessions, the exact. the exact activities that will be utilized in this funding is going to be presented to the council. And I think the Community Development Department will have sort of, I don't know if you guys have that to present today, but sort of a, an outline, white paper type to to exactly identify on what what each element will receive. For example, I think this year for the public services, there's a few, there's a few North Park Library Materials Residential Treatment Center of Alamance County, City Gate Dream Center for Youth Services. So the way that these funds are split are more identified within that. And as far as the next steps, public comment comment period is ongoing. We do have a public hearing scheduled later this month, and we will submit to HUD before the the deadline in August. And pending any comments or or questions, that's all I had to present tonight. Maybe muted, Mayor.
Finally got me, I was muted. Thank you. Thank you very much, Spencer. Any questions or comments from council?
Thank you for your work.
Yes.
All right. Without any further comments, obviously, this is something we dig into every year and will be a continuing discussion. So we appreciate this guiding resource and the work that was done to create it. With that, we'll move on to the next item in our agenda. Sonya, anything else you wanted to add on that?
Yeah, no, sir.
All right, appreciate it. All right, next on our agenda, item C is installment financing. At this time, we'll recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese. Welcome.
Council for the opportunity to appear before each night. We want to talk about the installment financing. And staff has been listening to council's comments about the use of fund balance over the past year or so. And so when the carousel housing building came up, we thought it might be good to investigate the possibility of financing this over a number year of years and which then it would be paid for by citizens who are actually using the facilities over those same years. But that was kind of the first step. And since there are certain fixed costs incurred for going through the financing process, we wanted to take advantage of this opportunity and see what else we might ought to include in the financing. And the first thing that came to mind is the actual carousel restoration that we ought to add that to this financing. Also, every year, council is aware that we do a three-year installment financing for the capital vehicles that we, and equipment that we choose to finance over a three-year period. So rather than incurring two financing costs, we thought we would combine that with this financing as well. Um, next, because of COVID hitting our revenues this year and the fiscal year that just ended, June 30th, we took out fire engine numbers, truck number six. And so we thought it would be good to possibly add that back in. Last staff looked over all the items that have typically been recommended for a couple of years, but they keep getting cut due to where our revenues and other items that, capital items that have a higher priority. And that list was also included in your agenda packet, but that was about $1 million, including the HVAC system at fire station number one, some retaining wall and driveway repairs at fire station number two. The light poles at Fairchild, they are rotting on the inside, so that is a risk hazard. So we chose to recommend items to council that we really need to do, and we've just been kind of kicking down the road, and we thought this would be a good opportunity to include that. From the advice of our financial advisors, they always say that we ask for more than we actually think we will need. And that way, the banks get that approved when we go out for our RFP. And then we don't have to go back if we've asked for less. And they would have to go back and go through their loan approval process again. So if we ask for nine and a half, but we only need to borrow 9.2 million, that's not an issue. I'll be glad to entertain any questions that council might have. What we would like to ask is that council add to the agenda tomorrow night a resolution. Not a resolution, but to set a public hearing for July 21st for a public hearing on this installment financing, that's one of the requirements. Anytime we go intend to borrow money over 59 or payback period, period, greater than 59 months, we ask, the LGC has to approve that debt financing. And so one of the requirements is to hold a public hearing to see if we have any comments on the public financing. So we are asking council if they would be willing to add that agenda item tomorrow night to the agenda to set a date of public hearing for July 21st. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Peggy.
Peggy, that item is already on the agenda. We just got it on new business for tomorrow night in council.
Thank you.
All right. So any questions from council or any objections to continuing to include this item?
So Peggy, some of the, some of the capital purchases, just take, take vehicles, for instance. Well, is, are we able to accelerate the payoff, the paydown of certain pieces of this? Or is it all together for the entire time? I mean, we've, we've, we've got debt service that we've factored into our normal budget. But it it would appear to me that that some of this debt is going to exist beyond its useful life. So how, help me understand what we're doing there.
Let me share my screen. I will share. This is a proposed finance debt schedule. Can you see that?
Yep.
So that it does address what you're talking about. It's kind of in two pieces. We have a three-year piece, and then we have a 20-year piece. The three-year piece, the 2.2 million is what we do every year, and we would do here regardless. Then we have the 20-year piece for everything else.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good question, Jim. I appreciate you bringing that up. Other questions from council?
Peggy, I see the proposed interest rate is 3.694. That our consultants feel pretty comfortable with. When will we actually go to, go to, go to, I mean, go to market with this?
Our, our banking bid is actually out, and we will get the results back on Wednesday. We sent it to quite a few partners. And the reason they project a higher interest rate is it wouldn't be good if we told you we expected a 2.5 interest rate, and then it comes in at 3.5. It's always better to say, this is the outside, this is the top of where we think it'll be, because it fluctuates daily based on what's happening in the market. And so we do expect it to be less than that. I believe current 20-year rates have been coming in between two and a half and three. But we, this projecting, projection here is three and a half.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, other questions from council? Very good. I appreciate staff putting this together. As mentioned, I think this is a good way for us to to tackle some, some needs over the current needs and pay for them effectively, recognizing the unique financial situation that the the whole world is in right now. All right, any other questions on that? Otherwise, it will be a new business item on our agenda tomorrow. All right, we'll move to item D on our agenda, the Interlocal Agreement Emergency Management Services. At this time, we'll recognize HR Strategic Initiatives Manager, Greg Grayson. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you this evening. We're here before you today to speak about the interim agreement for Emergency Management Services. This need is brought forward here in the city with a current vacancy. Our emergency management coordinator is currently vacant here recently. And we have been looking at what are the viable alternatives in order to move forward for the city. As an interim measure, we have sought to collaborate regionally with other local government units on this particular matter, at least for an interim period of time. We're seeking to have some assistance in day-to-day response and incidents, of course, but also providing technical assistance for our staff and training for our staff during this period of time so that we're prepared for those types of events that may occur. A very important piece of this is program analysis. Where are we today? How do we compare with national standards, best practices? And having some outside review of that by our partners and other local governments. We're proposing to do this in a 90-day interim period. And in that 90-day period, could be extended by 30-day increments if necessary. But we anticipate being able to cover the the essential scope of the work within that 90-day period. We would be using existing allocation of funds for the position in order to provide this regional partnership. We extended an offer to both Alamance County and Guilford County, since our corporate limits lie in both of those counties, to ask for some assistance. Alamance County did reply that they would be willing to help certainly with emergency situations, but their staff did not have the resources to provide the the program analysis and some of the additional needs that we had during this period of time. Guilford County did respond and provided a package back of how they could assist us in this endeavor. Our staff has reviewed that package and found it to meet all of the items within the request for proposal that we offered. We have collaborated with Burlington Fire and Burlington Police. Their staff have reviewed this and are supportive of that endeavor. They have looked at Guilford's proposal and feel like it will meet the needs. We've had several sessions with fire and police staff, as well as the Guilford staff. This item is coming to you on a consent agenda on July 7th. It is going through the legal and as well as finance review. The date is so that it can move then to the Guilford County Board on July 16th. And so we, we're asking you to look at this as a consent item in order for that to be addressed by the Guilford Board for the memorandum of agreement through the interlocal agreements provided by state statute. Within your package, you have four items. One is the request for proposal that we distributed to both Alamance and Guilford County. You have in your packet the response from Alamance. You also have the response from Guilford. And then you also last have the proposed memorandum of agreement and that memorandum of agreement between the city of Burlington and Guilford County for that interim period of time for the Emergency Management Coordinator Program. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have asking for this 90-day interim period of time that we have an interlocal agreement between Burlington and Guilford County for Emergency Management Services.
Thank you, Greg. Questions from council?
Greg, who, who's doing this now?
The police department is, has a schedule. Then it has resided in police, and they have a schedule for coverage up until the time that the Guilford County Board meets in the event that US Council approved that, and Guilford County does. So it's being shared across multiple people right now. The focus is really just the emergency response phase of this, rather than some of the proactive measures and obviously, the program evaluation.
Thank, thank you.
Other questions? All right, any objections to including this, as it's already on our consent agenda, but maintaining its position there?
It's fine.
Okay, all right. Greg, we appreciate your work on this.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is our Boards and Commissions Report. My understanding, we have none of those reports to present tonight. So next would be City Manager Report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just have three items, two COVID-related and one census item, and I'll get through those very quickly. I wanted to note in Cone Health that ask our help to publicize, they have a second day of COVID testing here in our community. That's going to be July 9th from 8:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. at the CTEC campus on Buckingham Road. It's first come, first served, no appointments are needed, no insurance is required. And in terms of, they have published a list of who should get tested at that, which it's pretty much open to anyone who thinks they need to test. It's a little more stringent than that, but they want everyone to come who thinks they may have an exposure or have been connected to someone. So they did one last week, and I think it had over 300 people that was at the shopping center there in Hall River, near the animal shelter. So they're doing that again this week, trying to reach out to members of our community who may not have a connection to a doctor's office. Second item is just to let council know, we will start on July 13th, screening all of our employees daily before they begin their work shift. Some departments have already implemented screening, as you know, so we have that in some of our public safety arenas already, but this will be completely throughout all our city departments, starting next Monday, 13th. And then finally, on the census, we just want to urge, and we'll have a speaker tomorrow on that. Still want to urge everybody in Burlington, everyone in Alamance County, to complete their census forms. As you all know, it's very, very important in terms of our federal funding is the thing that we're most excited about, making sure that gets, we get counted, so those funds will come back here. Ms. Linda Jones, who is the Census Coordinator for the Alamance Chambers Campaign to promote the census, will be with you tomorrow night to share a report. But just want to continue to remind everybody, every opportunity that we have.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from council on those items?
Screening is just going to be taking temperatures? Is that what you're doing for staff?
We actually will not do temperatures. It'll be a text-based app that comes to everyone's phone, and there will be a handful of screening questions that each person is to complete before they arrive for work. And then information gets reported up through their supervisor, obviously, to make a decision about whether to come to work or not. So we will not do temperatures, just sort of concerned about creating a medical record.
Interesting. Other questions? Any council comments before we wrap up?
Mayor, I've got one item I'd just like to to put out there and and get some, some feedback. You know, we've all received emails and and phone calls, and and we've actually had public comments concerning, mostly centered around forming a committee to review and provide feedback to our, our police staff. I went back and looked at a lot of the old data, and I even went back and found a briefing that Harold had set up for us in January of 15 with Assistant Chief Verdeck at the time about our old COPS Advisory Board. And I looked through that to see kind of what, what was on that, what their charter was to further promote trust and cooperation among police and community. I mean, a lot of the things that we've been talking about are, were in that old charter. I'd like to see if Harden could work with Chief Smythe and and sort of figure out a way to reprogram that. What improvements could we make? How would it need to look? And let's see if we can't proactively get something moving in that direction. I'd like to, you know, similar to the COPS Advisory Board that we had before. Just throw that out there for comments.
I'd like to comment on that too, if I could. I, I'd like to know the status of it. Did it actually, did it just go defunct or discontinue? Or in any event, I'd like to know more too, because I mean, if we're thinking about looking at something else, we need to know, maybe by lack of better word, the legal status of that group, you know, before we start layering on another group. So I'd like to hear more too, personally.
If we could just get that on a work session agenda or something. Harden, is that feasible?
Yes, sir. Would you like that at the August, August work session? We should be able to do that.
Okay.
I'll add in there too, we had our League of Municipalities Board meeting last week, and this was a topic that came up. Obviously, law enforcement's been front and center in a lot of ways for municipalities. But there's a number of us on that board who are working with league staff to help try to create a resource or a central kind of set of guidance for commi- communities who are looking at some of these review boards. So I'd say reach out to the league, because their staff is, is working to create some unified guidance there, especially on some of the countywide review board type ideas. We all recognize that with our mutual aid agreements, we're now concerned about the quality policing that a citizen may receive when they're in a joining community or when a joining community's officers may be in our community.
when they're in a adjoining community or when a joining communities officers may be in our community providing mutual aid. And so the league's looking at some guidance there.
With that said, Ian, that's, that's, that's a, that's a good statement. I'm really, I want to thank the police department for being involved with the process that evidently took place last week where the sheriff's department and all the municipal police chiefs met. The point you, you bring up is, is very valid in the sense that in very difficult situations, we normally depend on other, at, at times we have to depend on other departments to come in and be part of, of our functions. So I, I thought that was a, a real step forward in a sense of trying to have a unification of, 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 of the process going forward in terms of each department being on the same wavelength. I don't know it hard. You may know this. I'm not sure how many of those departments are accredited in the, in the, in the county, especially some of the smaller departments. Obviously, I know Burlington and Graham is, and I would imagine Mevin.
Mevin is, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need to be, keep that in mind also.
Other council comments?
I had one also related to law enforcement, which is I'd like to see future discussions as we go towards next year's budget. Obviously, we, we just got through all that budget process, but there's been a, a number of conversations that we had at our league board meeting about law enforcement budget and starting to look at kind of the different priorities that we've tasked policing with, including mental health, addressing homelessness in our community and kind of all the community development work that they do on a day to day basis. And right now we see a lot of that, or our community sees it in a, a law enforcement line item in our budget. And I'd like for us to have some, from further conversations as we go into kind of our next budget cycle about really making sure that our budget emphasizes our priorities and makes that clear to the community in a manner that is understandable. And so what I'd like to see is more separation of some of those budget items so we're not always tasking a law enforcement officer with providing the best level of community service regarding something like mental health. And so if we are tasking our staff members to do that, that it's very clearly tasked to members who are most able to provide that level of responsiveness in the community. And then if that needs to be a separate section or priority area of our budget, that that gets shifted as so, so the community can see that work that we're doing. I know it's been shared multiple times by folks that they, they appreciate the work when they find out all the work we've been doing through our law enforcement officers, through our public safety and police. But they, they didn't realize that we're already doing some of that work. So the more we can communicate all that we're tasking our police department to do and make sure that we're doing that in the most effective manner, which may not always be delivering that service from a uniformed officer. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think I'll just tag on to your comment. I think you, you, you're correct. I think folks will be surprised to know we have one fully paper, one full time counselor at this point that is embedded and, and can, can go on scene with our officers and does that a forty hour week. We're adding a second one that will be the same kind of program focused on youth that have some, some special needs in, in terms of when they have an encounter with law enforcement. Folks may be surprised too that we know we have a number of staff that are not sworn police officers that do community engagement work right now in the police department. So those things do exist. We know it exists, but you're, you're correct. It's probably not that widespread beyond those of us who, you know, look really, really closely at cities budget.
Harden, the one you're talking about that we're adding, is that through the YDDP program? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think there's a mindset that was shared with me last week that I think is really important to think about, which is when we talk about how we treat people and their interactions with law enforcement. I think we give people an unlimited number of chances to go to jail, but we don't always give people an unlimited number of chances to, to get themselves back on the right course. And I think it's something that we, we need to talk more about is how do we provide better connection to mental health services, addiction recovery, homelessness, all of this. It's sometimes way too easy to just keep sending someone through the law enforcement system. And so some of the work we've done with the youth individual that you just talked about in our discussion in previous meetings is a step in that direction, which is doing interception and kind of diversion into the most effective programs and trying to help individuals in that process.
This might be way too theoretical, but much of what you just said, it, it relates back to state and county responsibilities. I, I would, you know, again, maybe I'm asking too much here, but I believe there's a relationship that has to be formed in these specific situations between the, the municipal police department and whether it's county social services or county mental health, or for that matter, we're even working with the sheriff's department at times to have a, an agreement where these groups can go out and work together. I, I maybe I'm old fashioned, but I, I think that there's certain things that by state statute that's, it's been deemed to be most effective in North Carolina. I, I know we've always struggled with the mental health issue, especially from the closing of the hospitals of our police department. And sometimes I think it's too much to ask our police officers to do some of the things which we now may be asking them to do. But there has to be some type of an agreement or some type of understanding where we can get professionals in that area to come be part and work with our police officers if we can. I was going through some budgets today in North Carolina and certainly not trying to be controversial here, but I, I have not seen many reductions in city police departments. And unfortunately, if you look in the last couple of months in terms of the actual issues that's going on, not specifically here in North Carolina, is that I, I feel like at times what has occurred is there's been some police officers who've done some things that's really bad and should not have done. But I, I don't think that we need to, to overreact to a point of, of, of putting that label on all of the agencies throughout the country. So to me, it would be just a, a, a situation and it may be very complex to do, to work with some people who are trained specifically, whether it's social services, whether it's mental health, wherever it may be, to work with our police department. And, and especially in dealing with specific situations which they run into during their, during their time. Jim, what do you think of that?
I agree a hundred percent. I think that to, to your point, one of the best articles I've ever read, just a short narrative, is what do we expect from our cops? And we're asking them to do so much in so many different arenas. We got to be sure that they've got the resources behind them to accomplish the goals that a complex community requires now. And policing is a complex project and that's going to require more funding, not less. So the, the pieces that you mentioned, Harold, certainly with leveraging community partners and other agencies is extremely important. I'm glad you brought that up.
It looks like Chris Gaddis has joined us. I don't know, Chris, if you wanted to weigh in.
Mayor, I was just, I was just going to ask Chris to also share our progress on getting our officers trained as, as, as the CIT program. Chris, can you talk a little bit about that too, please?
For, I've really enjoyed your conversation over the last five minutes specifically. Policing has changed tremendously over the last twenty, twenty-five years. Specifically, I can vividly remember years ago when I came in. One of the things that I was trained to do and trained well was, you know, how to enforce the law and, and work on things. But one of the things that I did not get trained in a lot of times was dealing with mental health, substance abuse, dealing with juvenile issues. But things have developed over time where many of you have already stated that, that a lot of duties and responsibilities have fallen on law enforcement. We are part of this solution, but should not be the only provider of some of these services. Harden, you mentioned the CIT training. That's crisis intervention training and that's a specific forty hour block of instruction that our staff goes through. We are presently around seventy-five percent of our staff, our frontline staff has been able to attend that training and we continuously are, are filling the seats as best we can. And they are able to provide community members, citizens, the ability to have staff there. You've also mentioned that we have the law enforcement crisis counselor that is able to help provide services to, to folks in the community who, who may not need law enforcement. We're able to have those services provided where they know the, 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 the best course of action that a, that a cop or a, a law enforcement officer may not be able to, to provide to them. And these are wonderful services that have been provided through, you know, council assistance and through our budget for many years. So I, I appreciate the, the, the compliments that you all have given us and, and we will gladly sit down at the table and, and try to work through, you know, budgeting and projects that we can be a part of. But, you know, some of these services have, have fallen onto our shoulders for some, for so long. And, and we don't mind carrying the load, but there are some expertise and subject matter experts that could probably provide a better service than us. Not that we're doing a bad job, but you know, I think the community deserves better at times when some of these specialties are needed.
Thank you, Chris. We really appreciate you weighing in on that. So we look forward to continuing conversations. I think we're in a good spot, thanks to the leadership that we have here in the city, especially in our police department. And we look forward to continuing to be a leader, both regionally and nationally. I appreciate our proactive approach to addressing a lot of this. Any other council comments? I will share. I've got some National League of Cities notes from March, right before the pandemic. I've been beginning to roll those up to share with you. There are some particularly relevant items in there regarding housing, voter participation, analysis of data in communities. And my plan is to bring those to our work session in August. So no, you're on the needles waiting for that report, but we'll get back to you soon.
Mayor, could I ask one more question to Peggy especially? What percentage are we seeing now in reference to our water and sewer payments? That we're down since the pandemic began?
I'll have to look and I'll bring that to you tomorrow night. I do know that at the end of April, our actual receivables balance had increased a hundred and twenty-three percent. That number I know off the top of my head.
Now tell me what that means.
That means that last year, if we had a hundred thousand dollars outstanding in unpaid water and sewer bills, this year we have two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Okay. Well, the reason I bring this up is that, that, that there's a, actually today, there's, especially in eastern part of the state, especially with this, especially when the municipalities has got power. And the local government commission is beating tomorrow on this. There are certain cities that the question is going to be is how long will this policy go forth? Many communities are really, really taking a hit right now. So I, I, that was another question. One more question. What did the sales tax allocate, uh, sales tax receipts are, should be in for April, right?
We got our sales tax, which is April sales act that is collected by businesses is reported to the Department of Revenue in the month of May. So they call it the reporting month of May. But so we know that for April, our sales tax was down ten and a half percent, I believe.
Okay. So very close to what we budgeted.
Right. Very close to what we budgeted for next year.
Very good. Thank you, Peggy. Any other questions from council? Otherwise, we'll wrap up and see you one tomorrow evening.
All good.
All right. Thank you. Take care. We'll be back here at seven PM. Yeah. Do want to mention that we have these resources available on the city website at BurlingtonNC.gov media. And that live stream again will be at youtube.comCOBNC. If you do have any questions about joining, that information is online. So thank you everyone for participating this evening.
Thanks. Take care.
See you.
Bob, good luck.
Thanks.